Down to City Council reports. And I'm, I'm going to, in an effort to be fair, I'm going to make a small comment. Because I don't want to look like I'm sitting back and shotguning anybody from the last position on council reports or using the bully pulpit. But I'm going to correct a couple of comments that were made at last council meeting. Well, I don't disagree with the direction of the council to appoint our city manager as the city clerk in an interim position until an election occurs. I am going to address a couple of comments that were made. Those comments were that this was done at the last minute. That there was some veil of secrecy over this. Nothing could be further from the truth, folks. I went out and solicited individuals to run for the city clerk position. I lied to them. I straight up lied to them. I was misinformed. I started about three, maybe three and a half weeks before the end of the election, the turn in. And I told four people that the pay for this position was fifty dollars. I was looked directly in the eye by all four of them and told, why would I want to do that? Some more colorful comments came later. When I was corrected by the current person that was, that had last had that seat as the city clerk, and I was told it was seventy-five dollars. Well, that was a significant jump in pay. So I thought I would go out and try to solicit two more people. The last person of which was on the Tuesday prior to the end of, of the turn in or the ability to file paperwork. Between individuals four and five, I talked to my wife. I asked her, in the absence of anyone else running, and explaining what was going on and the fact that the position had been vacated, I asked her if she would consider running for the city clerk's position. With hesitation, she didn't give me a commitment. It wasn't until after the sixth person told me very plainly that they would not do it, that she agreed to come to, or to obtain the paperwork from City Hall on Wednesday, thinking that there was a, still a week to file, but not knowing what the, what the true meaning of a vacated position was, thinking if, if the incumbent wasn't running, that it would still give another window for people to come forward. She went out on Thursday and collected twenty-eight of thirty signatures. This is how things are done in California. We do not put out for advertisement elected positions. We have no obligation to. The ci, the citizenry of a city has an obligation to know what positions they are, or are available. The Appeal Democrat, about a month before the ending date, put out how many positions do not get filled and have to be appointed. The voters of our jurisdiction, in their great wisdom, chose ten years ago to make the treasurer and the city clerk elected positions. They were asked, do you want them appointed? Seventy percent said no. They wanted to build a vote on it. With that said, I find it difficult to ask people to come and serve on a city when they're going to be scrutinized for their willingness to serve. I think that, given the, any person that is willing, like Mr. Robinson, who has already left, and others that are willing to serve this city, you ought to look at every opportunity. Could the Sutter County Taxpayers Association, could Pat have run? Absolutely. Could any other person that's eighteen years of age run? Yes. Male, female, yes. As long as you are a citizen of the United States and you meet that criteria, you can run. That's the bottom line. To face scrutiny for that, by this panel, is unreasonable, in my, in my estimation. I'm going to leave it at that because I've gone over my three minutes of concern. Again, I don't want to be accused of being somebody that, that ran up and shotguns somebody from behind. This is the reason I presented here, is so anybody can respond to that. Councilmember Diboll.
I'll go ahead and make a comment to that. The reason I did bring up that position was because we did not know about it until the last minute. There was no notice, as, as far as I know, from our office. Even I didn't know about the position because we have always appointed somebody in the position. It came strictly on the last minute. If, if there was conversation going on prior to and hoping to get somebody to go ahead and file, I'm all about people coming up and, and doing their service. That's not the issue. The issue was that we did not know about it. As far as my history is, that that position was always appointed. So when that notice came out, it was merely an email.
True, the mayor.
So that is the only comment that I, I'm emphasizing on, is that if we didn't know about it, how was the public to know that?
Go ahead and, and then you can make your, your following council comments. And I'll leave it, you can come in. I'll second on this. Thank you.
Are we doing our reports?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I just want to, prayers out to our Beal Air Force family. Thank you for all who sacrificed and served. And may God bless and comfort the family who lost a loved one today. I would also like to thank, thank everyone involved in getting our schools back, or back up and running, getting our kids back in school. No matter how we slice it, our kids suffered and tremendously affected by it. I have a seventeen-year-old who was tremendously affected by it by Thursday night. She was literally in tears. So I know the suffering that went on with the kids. I have relatives who have very young ones, who the little ones were fearful of going to school from what they were visioning out there. Schools become an extension of our kids' family. It is an extension of their family. They go to school with a lot of trust and very strong relationships. And I feel that all of this had caused a tremendous loss to them. So I hope that we are effectively building those relationships, have a plan for it, and, and bring those relationships between our children, our schools, our teachers, our parents, and our community as a whole. It is so vital to have that relationship back and to educate our kids effectively because it is our kids' future that we're looking at from this day forward. Other meetings that I did attend was the Housing Authority, which pretty much normal business as far as keeping the upheld of our buildings through the Housing Authority. Transit meeting we had last week, and we authorized for the Sikh temple to go ahead and obtain the service like they did last year of twenty-five additional buses to accommodate all the folks that come in to be a participant with that parade. We also have surveillance cameras and videos that are fully operational at the Vogue location down on Highway ninety-nine in Vogue. As far as that, I don't think there was anything else from that meeting that came.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to Councilmember Dukes.
All right. First, I'll start with events I attended over the past couple of weeks. Had the privilege of attending the Yuba City Police Pig Feed on Saturday evening and supporting our police association and representing the city. And I would like to respond to Councilmember Diboll's comments regarding the clerk's position. It has been an elected position regardless of whether or not the current clerk had vacated that position or not. It was up for election this year. It's on the ballot. And it's open for anybody to apply for that. It was not last minute. As, as the mayor mentioned, it was in the paper a month prior to that 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 position was open. So this was not a last-minute thing. It's, it comes up every, I believe, was it four years? Just like the council seats do. And the council doesn't go out and recruit. I mean, sometimes we do, but it's not our responsibility to make sure that people are, are in those positions or running for those positions. It is an elected position. It has been in the past. And there was nothing last minute on this at all.
Thank you. And moving on to Councilmember Gill.
Sure. We had our Sutter Beach Flood Control Agency meeting last week. And the Laurel Avenue project has been put off to 2017 due to funding. So not a lot of project stuff going on. In addition to that, last week, I was asked by the mayor, who was asked by the Yuba City Teachers Association Union, as well as the Yuba City Unified School District, to come help, be a mediator to get these talks moving because they had stalled. And along with the mayor, myself, and Supervisor Flores, we were able to visit with both parties right here at City Hall. We started at eleven o'clock in the morning and we finished at three o'clock. It's the first time that I was involved in discussions. Having been in the banking business for thirty years and understanding the finances and numbers, it was pretty eye-opening. It was, our number one priority was to get the students and the teachers into the classroom. Whatever time it took, we were willing to work till the morning. We were willing to bring breakfast in. We would have sat there the next day. We wanted to get the kids back into the school on Monday. As we got in the room, we realized that both sides were pretty, pretty far apart on their discussions. There was a lot of distrust from the parties. And I believe when we first started, the school district was at eight point six, somewhere nine point six, and the school board was at fifteen percent. And one interstate meeting at thirteen percent. Eleven o'clock at night, we were able to craft up or set up, help set up the foundation forum where the numbers were closer to eleven point one percent. And it was really interesting to see, being in the whole meetings, and the information that was sent out by Facebook, by all social medias, was farthest from the truth. And I can honestly say it was, it was an eye-opening. What we sat and everything was confidential, what we sat, what we read on Facebook was farthest from the truth. And our, our number one intention was to get the kids and the teachers back into the classroom as fast as we could. And it was interesting to read even in today's paper and talking to the school districts, even on Sunday morning, even on Monday morning, to recommend that, I think that you guys need to get a mediator involved because there were just, the, the numbers were there, they were just hung up on the language. And sadly to say, if they would have hammered out, both parties would have hammered out the language on Sunday, we would have voided the entire week, which is well over three, three and a half million dollars lost to the teacher salaries. And those salaries are not coming back. The strike days are not getting paid. And our students were suffering because these days that they missed are not getting added back. And Thanksgiving week, they're not getting added back. End of the school year, they're not getting added back. Very, very hard for students who were taking AP courses, especially at the block schedule at River Valley. One day of school day in the block schedule in AP is three days of regular school that they're missing. Nonetheless, they came together, got the deal done. And students are back at school and teachers are back at school. So it was very hard. A lot of people did come up and ask, why is the city council involved in this? A, we were asked by the school district and we were asked by the union to help out negotiate these talks. Secondly, this is an economically impact that it hurts our community. Three and a half million dollars taken out from the teachers means three and a half million dollars ex amount taken out of our sales tax. Socially, it was putting neighbor against neighbor, teachers against neighbors, which is not where this community needs to go. We needed to end this impasse immediately and we needed to get everybody back. Now that we have, we have time of healing and we've got to get back together and put this community into one family as we continue on. So anytime it hurts us economically, socially, I truly believe the city council needs to be effective and needs to take a leadership role and not take a backseat role. Thank you. Also attended today, ribbon cutting for Pete's Pizza and Brew House, opening up here right next to Chili's. They will be having pizza and seafood, from what I understand. More than thirty beers on tap and seventy-five jobs they're bringing into this community. That's, that's huge for our community. And lastly, I want to send out prayers to the family members of Beal Force Base, pilot who lost his life, prayers to him and his family.
Thanks very much. Vice Mayor Cleveland.
Thank you. Wednesday fourteenth, conducted various commission interviews as was stated by the mayor. We had a fantastic group to work with and to make choices. So we hope, we encourage some of them to remain in contact and that we may be requesting them in the future to come back and interview. Then also on Wednesday, we did the Gilcizer Drainage District and where the decision was to look at a possible change in how the district is governed and designed with, you know, the future coming in, it's flood issues and different ways that districts are operating. We need to look at that within the city and other things that may change. Thursday the fifteenth, attended Yuba Sutter Transit Authority. And then also, that's the evening that we attended the neighborhood meeting, Forefire. Men were there to represent our community. A policeman, myself, and I know that Preet dropped by and said, couldn't be there because she has a daughter in volleyball. Definitely family is, is needed to be there at their games. And had a lot of great recommendations, discussions, and questions that, as far as we know, every one of them, the respective person was able to give a good answer and direct them where to, to do their final research. So that was a very productive day. And then the only thing I really have to say about the concern about the position is that it is unfortunate that the declaration that a position was vacated by our county clerk's recorder in elections office to cause the confusion. It could have been ruled on much sooner. Well, at least I heard that it could have been. And that would have made it to where the twelfth would have been recognized as the end rather than the extended five days. So this is something that unfortunately happens occasionally during the election process when, when requests for rulings are not, I'm going to say done in a timely manner or as quick as possible because those are, are critical issues to an election. So some of the misunderstanding was because of that. But then I still stand by my decision to let it go through the election process so that it is truly the citizens that are actually doing the appointing, even though it's one person, it's actually the citizens saying, boom, they got elected and they're in. And so I'm going to stand by that aspect of my decision. Thank you very much.
All right. And, and thank you. The, the word appointed, I'm just, I want to clarify this. Appointed for Ms. Terrell Locke is not accurate. She was elected.
She was.
Four years ago. And at that very same time, so was Spencer Morrison, who is our treasurer. And so I, I do want to make it perfectly clear. I also want to clarify for, for perfect clarity that the position for clerk nor treasurer was located in the Appeal Democrat story. It prompted me to inquire, after reading it, as to how many positions were available in Sutter County and also looking at ours here within the city. So a number of those, and, and at the very same time, I want to be perfectly clear, I was out looking and talking to people that were interested in running for school board, for city council, for all of those other things. It's not my job to do that, but it's my job to encourage people to be more civically active in our community and, and have them engaged because an engaged community is the best community that we possibly can have. Just a couple of small things. Down at Secog, as I've announced previously, Mike McKeever is retiring at the end of the year. And we went through, as, as part of the Board of Directors on a, on a select group that I was on, we went out and did a national search. We had over forty applicants. And I am pleased to say that tomorrow, right around one o'clock, Secog will hold a, a press conference to announce one of the most remarkable individuals we could have asked nor hoped for to come to step forward and, and seek the position of CEO at Secog. Their start date will be roughly April one. But in the interim, our COO at Secog will be stepping in, in the interim position. So Kirk Trost will be the, the interim down there. And, and we appreciate his stepping forward to keep the organization running as they are key and instrumental to almost every traffic project that we do in, in Yuba City. So.
Senator, are you able to share who that new person is? Or you have to wait till one o'clock?
I'm sworn, I'm sworn to have to, well, yeah. So I'm sworn.
You're wait till one o'clock. Okay.
So, so we can't let it out because their involvement on the national scene is.
We're not going to say anything. You're just amongst your, five of your closest friends here.
Yeah. Nice. My wife even tried that and I wouldn't tell her. The, the school district, let, let me just share with you kind of what transpired in advance of the, of the school district first. I'd like to thank, first, the majority of the citizens of Yuba City for their supportive nature in, that really led to members of, of the negotiating teams putting forward an effort to get together. And, and that effort was led, and, and I asked individuals to, to come in based on some experience and their expertise. But Cash, with his background in finance, his background in business, I asked Cash to come in. And then I had to go outside. And from the business world, from the education world, because he owns a private educational institution, I asked Mr. Dan Flores, Supervisor, to, to step in and help. There was no hesitation on their part to come in and be an active player in this. For over about three weeks, maybe four weeks preceding the strike, there was always the threat of a strike looming. And we did not want to see the, the teachers, the Yuba City Teachers Association step off of the cliff into a strike. We were looking for the possibility of a resolution prior to that. I was asked through the city manager, who had been approached by the school district to possibly start formulating a plan of action. I, I spoke with Nancy Alberg and presented an independent forum that would have been more as a jury. It has worked in other jurisdictions, but bringing approximately five people together from the community to understand the interests and needs of the teachers, at the same time, what the constraints and issues were for the district. That was not just rejected, that it was flat out rejected as maybe down the road, if things get bad. Well, step forward. In, in, between that period of time, I was being approached by members of the union. They were asking for intervention. Part of their negotiations team came to me and presented me with last proposals from the district. I read through them. I didn't understand them. I had to be educated on them. I didn't, I, I have negotiated on behalf of police officers and have negotiated or been in backroom portions for the city of Yuba City. But I have, I've never seen how complex a, the negotiations could be for teachers and certainly when there's outside influences being played into that. Not local influence, but, but statewide influence. The funding sources, the legality of the funding sources, all of those things, we had to ramp up fairly quick on. And on Thursday night, I was asked by, well, actually, Mr. Jennings came to my place of business and we talked for over an hour. And he was perplexed. They had been on their first day of strike. He had limited sleep. He was frustrated. He couldn't get traction in discussions or get anybody back to the table. My questions were, have you asked? No, they need to. That's the response. I asked the district, have you asked? No, they need to. That was the response. It wasn't going to happen anytime soon. So with that, I received a number of phone calls from members of the public asking for intervention. I had pastors, I had teachers, I had business people asking for somebody to intervene. And they felt that if I simply asked them to come to the table, that they might do it. So I was actually standing in the middle of a parking lot at an event for a new business here in town when I started making the phone calls. Those phone calls went out first to board members, to the president of the board. It went out to, to members of the district. It went out to the union representatives. And without any hesitation, they all agreed to an eight o'clock Monday morning meeting. That's when I knew I had, was getting close to victory. At that, I let that sink in. They started formulating their plans on how they were going to come together and I dropped the second bombshell. I said, we're moving the time up. And so we moved it to Saturday with an effort to try to get the students back into the classroom last Monday. We were dedicated to that. I, I know that the efforts, the sixteen straight hours that we put in down here were an effort towards that. I think there was a, a true effort being made. And then in the eleventh hour of negotiations, outside influences prompted a change in direction. We couldn't have been more disappointed as the group that was trying to, to get this together. We started to, to try to pull away. We had to educate ourselves some more. We had to go through budget meetings with the district. So we understood their budget. It's complex. It's different than a city's budget. So we had to, we had to learn that. At the same time, as, as Cash said, there were rumors flying around this, this city that weren't true. It could have been no further from the truth, the majority of what we were seeing. There was, there was a true desire. There was frustration. They just didn't know how to mobilize and, and come back together with a true effort to try to get to resolve. And that resolve was to get our kids back into the classroom. After we talked about it, we offered the assistance of a negotiator. The district accepted after a couple hours. And at three o'clock that afternoon, the teachers' association turned it down. We were perplexed. And at that point, to maintain neutrality, I had to step back from, from what we were offering. At the same time, Mr. Derringale assisted in keeping channels of communication open for us, though we were not directly communicating with either district nor with the teachers' union at that point. We were still offering facilities. And thank you to the citizens of Yuba City for allowing us to offer facilities that not only we're here at City Hall, but we were able to go to gated locations to be able to keep the, the public influence, the outside influences down and allow them to work out details. I can't be more proud of the resolution that came about. Our students are back. They're back in school. What does it mean for our area? Twelve thousand kids went back to school. What does it mean for our area? Twelve thousand kids went back to school. If it's fifty percent, six thousand returned. Teachers are back at work. Uh, the economic loss to our community may not be recognized for a long time, but that aside, that's not the important issue. The important issue is making sure that our kids are educated. Um, they were losing days at a catastrophic rate in the block schedule, and I, I can tell you that that was the number-one and only driving factor to try to get these, these folks, um, back in the same room. Um, I appreciate the efforts made by the negotiating teams, and then the, uh, their willingness to bring in two separate, uh, mediators and help get through the process. I think they did a, a fantastic job of coming, uh, to resolution, uh, as the teachers' group voted overwhelmingly, uh, to support and, and, uh, ratify that contract. Um, next step is the acceptance of the contract by the school board. So it's not done yet, uh, but hopefully, uh, that, that we come to the final, uh, in, in chapter and, and a history here in Uba City that doesn't provide, uh, for the very best view of our city, uh, but certainly, uh, is one that, that we stepped through, and, and I think we did it without extreme violence, without anything else other than maybe a few people getting their feelings hurt. Um, and, and a loss to our education system, um, of seven days of, of educational opportunity. Um, but I, I certainly appreciate our teachers. I think that they're a remarkable, uh, value to our community. I have a daughter that's a teacher. I have an ex-wife that's a teacher. I speak highly of both of them. Uh, one is in the Marisol, uh, system, and one is here in Uba City. Um, and if you can imagine having an ex-wife in the Uba City system, um, you know, I might have heard just a couple negative things from, from her, uh, but, but, uh, her input was, was also, uh, valuable, um, as, as every teacher out there wanted to make sure that, that, uh, the kids were back in the, in the classroom. Uh, with that, we're going to adjourn tonight, but we're going to adjourn, uh, in the memory of, uh, our fallen Beal, uh, aviator, and, and certainly, uh, prayers are with his family. Support that this community can provide uh, will be instrumental into them, uh, beginning a healing process. Thank you.